I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, October ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will begin with the superintendent and student board member update.
Fantastic. October ninth, we start with the spotlight on our students. We had farm to school last week. Lenartown Elementary School on the first and Dinerd Elementary School on the third. What a great opportunity. They were also recognized before the county commissioners as well. Really, this is what makes St. Mary's County such an incredible special place where we all come out and talk about local produce and healthy eating and farm to table and how to make fresh and good choices with your foods. And the kids really get to sample all of the wonderful things that are grown right here in their backyards. I know Ms. Mary Washington, as always, you were there, and if you follow her on her Facebook feed, there are so many incredible pictures of them really interacting and enjoying not only fresh foods but also the animals that they brought as well. That was really, really, really fun things. Then afterwards, it got incorporated into their cafeteria. Great Mills High School, homecoming week, a little spotlight there. They had their, it was Glow Week, Pyjama Day, Decades Day, Jersey Day, Dynamic Duo Day, Spirit Day, followed by an in-county rivalry football game on a rainy day where they were able to eke out a win over, I don't know, high school. And then they had a really, really, really wonderful dance. It was a great deal of fun. We'll spotlight Chopticon and Lenartown as well as they go through it. But that, a lot of times, we forget just how much fun high school is. Spotlight on students continuing SMCPS athletics. We are deep into the season. We have lots of things going on. One of the things that is being sent out in the school system smores and in our Monday message and across is a smore newsletter that specifically highlights upcoming competitions as well as focus on some people who are coaching and athletes across the system. We also had many of our coaches recognized from across the system. We have a county cup update, and Lenartown High School is leading the way right now with one hundred and thirty points. They won last year. So, National Coaches Day was last week, so even though it was last week, let's thank all of our coaches and the people who come out to support all of our children. If you are to click on the smore, they really do have some fantastic summaries of athletes as well as coaches. I encourage you to click that link on your school's smore and read more about all of the things that are going on.
Can I add one thing?
You most certainly may.
We also have a number of former students who have come back to coach.
To coach, yeah.
So, it's like they wait until they can turn twenty-two that they can come back and coach.
Right. And they're really, and they come back into the classroom as well. So, they come back in all these different ways to support our students and support county athletics. Back to Great Mills High School, the Teacher of the Year Gala was on Friday night up at, not Martin's West, but Martin Valley.
Mansion.
Mansion, I think. We honored and recognized Ms. Laura Runkles. She brought out two tables worth of people to support her. Teachers from Great Mills and Spring Ridge and Lenartown and Chopticon, they were all there. It was a really, really, really nice night, and what a fun group. Again, Raquel Gussford, who was in there in the red dress, she and Lauren were definitely instrumental in homecoming week, and they were talking about all of the fun that they had planning and all the ways that all the staff got involved. I've been doing new teacher visits, four of them so far. We did Northern Elementary Schools up at Benjamin Banneker. We did Southern Elementary Schools down at Lexington Park. We did Spring Ridge Middle School, and we did Great Mills High School. And when we do that, we talk a little bit about what makes learning fun, like what makes you have fun in school. And to have fun, you need to be playful, you need to be connected, and ultimately, you need to be in the flow. You need to remove your distractions, distractions from all the things that you might have, including your cell phones, and you get to have fun. And it starts with questions about like what fascinates you, what delights you, and then ultimately, what are some of the things that we could be doing differently or better? And they came back, and there are so many things that really are fascinating to them and delighting them as they come into St. Mary's County. They're talking about the, and we've heard this before, differentiated needs for teachers that come in, teachers that come in with experience from other counties. We've been very successful in recruiting from other counties. Teachers who are brand new to the profession, having completed an accredited teacher prep pathway in one of our colleges, universities. And then we also have people who are career changers, who have advanced degrees and have been doing something different, and they want to move into the teaching profession. And so, they really talked about the need to have kind of a differentiated new teacher seminar to target the needs and the talents of all the teachers as they come in. They're talking a lot about the, a lot of things that are going on in the state of Maryland as far as will we move from certification to licensure and navigating all the requirements for that. And a wonderful teacher that came to us from Philadelphia, she did direct quote, "It's an absolute blessing to come to work with students who want to be here and learn." And she really was able to recount how, in particular, this was at Great Mills High School, how particularly the students there are so really engaged with the adults and with the learning in the classroom. It was really, really nice. We also had the superintendent's advisory group of employees known as Sage because they are so sage, and that is the Education Support Professionals of the Year from each one of the schools, the Teacher of the Year from each one of the schools, the Principal of the Year, and Leaders of Excellence. And we all got together and just kind of talked about how the year is going so far, what's on their mind. That's where they talked about technology and specifically challenges with smart boards, and that's going to be something that we'll be discussing in brief when we're talking about what we are coming, we have a request for unallocated fund balance and where that would go. They talked about cell phones and overall the classroom climate and the lack of distraction with their kids, and that the classrooms are louder and engaged, and that's such a good thing. And then we talked about HQIM, High Quality Instructional Materials, and how the school system has invested in high-quality instructional materials and how we're really seeing that reinforced within the classrooms, and how we are definitely not using things such as teacher-paid teachers or Googling something and including it. The way in which we, all boats rise is that we use the same resources, and we had a great conversation about all of that. Current vacancies, oh, we're getting close. We still have an elementary education, elementary, middle school art, middle school, high school math. We need math teachers. So, if you're somebody who has, maybe you're in a different career, maybe you have a degree in mathematics, and you find yourself in an office staring into a screen updating spreadsheets, and you say, "There's got to be more to life than this." I wonder what it would be like to be in front of a class of twenty to twenty-five middle schoolers or twenty-five to thirty high schoolers and talking to them about the importance of computational fluency and being able to use formulas to derive results. Boy, do we have something for you. Same thing with science, same thing with, so there's opportunities. So, please, if you want to join us, hit the big red button. We are in October. I can't believe it. We will finish this week. Next week, we have a two-hour early release. Then the following week after that, we have an evening board meeting, and then on the twenty-fifth, we finish, we conclude the first marking period of school. So, we're already past the halfway point and moving forward. So, to all of our students out there, again, make sure that you're keeping up on all your assignments, make sure you know exactly how you're performing each one of your classes, and if the grade you currently have is not the grade you would like to see on the report card, then please make sure you double down and make the effort because we still have much, much, much time to have that four-point-oh to start off your school year. With that, I turn it over to Ms. Hannah Heisler.
All right. Hi, everybody. So, as I will talk about in a few later slides, I have lately been immersing myself in our beautiful elementary schools. So, I have visited four total, but between this meeting and last meeting, I visited Piney Point and Oakville, and then I have two more before our next meeting. So, I'm visiting Letty Dent and Duke Elementary, and I'm super, super excited, and I've just loved talking to fifth graders. I feel like it's not only changed my perception about the county but kind of my perception about life, because I feel like as an older kid, I don't often think of like, of younger kids and like what it feels like to have unlimited imagination. And so, I'm really thankful for that opportunity, for not only myself but also more importantly for our county and bettering our county. And it's really amazing to hear about some of the things that students are doing at their schools that we really could apply everywhere. And so, I am leading the superintendent's Student Leadership Advisory Committee, and we're planning for our big meeting on October twenty-third. We have about two members from each grade from each school present, so it's a very like representative body, and they kind of give me advice and the superintendent, and so it's super helpful. And this year, we're doing a lot of fun activities, a lot centered around Halloween, and I'm super excited. I met with the steering committee on Monday. That's the picture on the top right. And we planned our whole activities, and people from every school, they're all getting a chance to present, and we're doing presentations about each school. The kids are writing their own presentation. And then, of course, we're talking about cell phones, which should be an interesting conversation for sure, but I'm super excited for that. And then for St. Mary's Association of Student Councils, which I act as an ex officio member of the executive board as a student member of the board, we had a meeting on October fourth. We were finalizing our workshops. I'm presenting a workshop at our general assembly on the thirty-first, and we also took pictures to go on the website for the county, so super exciting. And then in my personal life, I had a very busy day. I led my NHS meeting and my SGA meeting today, so busy day but exciting. All right, so our first school visit was Piney Point Elementary. It was super awesome to talk to them. We were actually talking in what's called a pod, so a lot of elementary schools don't have this, but this was something that was super cool about Piney Point, is that all the classrooms for that grade are clustered around like the central pod, so that's in that picture, and so they have a gathering space in between them. So, they talked about how important it is to be here because they want to learn and have fun and become geniuses, which I think is super awesome. They were super, super engaged when I talked to them. Definitely shout-out teachers. Their teachers were really helping them be engaged, and they did a really good job at eye contact and mentioned a lot that they wanted to see active participation and eye contact to help them be engaged. And they also cared a lot about being approachable. I think they had a school initiative to be kind and say hello to each other, which is super awesome. And then they also talked about bus patrol, which is super fun, and it's a great opportunity for those kids to sort of be school leaders, which is super awesome. And then their school seems like they're doing a ton of events. They're right on the water. They're actually the only elementary school that's on the water. So, within their school, you can see in the background of that picture on the top that they actually have life jackets and oars, which is super fun. So, they go out on the water all the time, and they have access to the water, which is super, super cool, and the kids were super enthusiastic about that and the field trips. They also have a system called Shiny Pioneys, and it's sort of a different tiered system, but the highest tier, they get to put their shiny piony in a little raffle bin, and they get to win raffles. So, that's super fun. And then they also have paint nights, which is super cool and super relaxing. It's sort of like Bob Ross. They have like one thing that everybody's painting, and then everybody else paints it, like a tutorial, I guess, but it was super, super cool, and we've done, we volunteered for a few of those for NHS, so it was really cool.
And I apologize. I should have inserted the mascot, and I totally zoned on it. So, we will be including a picture of their mascot at our next board meeting because you have to see the piney mascot. You have to actually see the lighthouse mascot.
Oh, gotcha.
The actual super tall, seven and a half foot mascot that they wear. So, for the Piney Point, they're the lighthouse. So, yes, yeah, good stuff.
All right. So, then my second school visit on October third was to Oakville Elementary, and they were all gathered in the cafeteria with their stage, and they talked about how attendance really matters to them because they want to be here and they want to be learning. When they talked about engaged, they talked about how important it is to ask questions and pay attention to the speaker. Their school has a Lego theme this year, and so all throughout the cafeteria, there were different Lego boards for each class, and they get Legos for how well they behave as a class and stay engaged and stay on top of it. So, I thought that that was a really cool incentive and definitely very fun. For approachable, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to go, on the next slide, they have a whole, you know, Lego of limits and be your personal best, so they are all about Legos, and kids started bringing in all of their Lego models, and that's kind of how they do their rewards. There's a great deal of interest in that, and you can see that fifth grade, we did draw to their attention that fifth grade was actually lagging behind the other grades in their accumulation of Legos. So, we'll have to find out if they, after our meeting, if they've doubled down and moved a little forward with that.
Yes. Have to get the Legos, super important. For being approachable, they talked about talking to other people at lunch and recess and always sharing a smile with their classmates. They do morning meetings, which is super fun, every morning to get them all on the same page as they start the day, which I think is a really great thing, and my middle school did that briefly, and it was super, super helpful. So, I think that is really awesome that they do that. And they also do community gatherings, so that's when their whole school goes into the cafeteria, and they share announcements and play games, and I think they said something about like a scream-off.
Mm-hmm. Right, they actually have a decibel meter, and they, each school, each class level has a different chant, and so they compete against each other to see who can have the loudest cheer.
Yes.
So, good stuff.
So, super exciting, and then, yep, that was a picture of all of us.
Oh, yeah. All gathered together.
Yes, with a slide in the background and the Legos, so super, super awesome.
Very nice.
Yep. All right. So, we have recognitions this week. Mr. Thompson with National School Bus Safety Week.
Come on up. In front of safety workers first. Can you come right in front of the, uh?
Yes, the big sign.
Good evening, everyone. National School Bus Safety Week has been designated for the week of October twenty-first to October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, and this year's theme is driving safely into the future. School bus transportation is the safest way to travel to and from school each day, and we encourage students and families to review the transportation items in the student handbook to help create a safer bus ride to school. Additionally, St. Mary's County will also recognize October twenty-first through October twenty-fourth as School Bus Driver and School Bus Attendant Appreciation Week. Our school bus drivers and bus attendants are a key component to helping our students access their educational opportunities, and we are fortunate to have the best drivers and best bus attendants in the state of Maryland. Here tonight, representing all of our great bus drivers and bus attendants, our group of bus drivers who provided the shuttle service for the eighth graders from Esperanza Middle School to the University of Maryland Southern Maryland campus for the start of the school year. These drivers are instrumental in allowing SMCPS to quickly implement a temporary alternative for Esperanza Middle School eighth graders to start their school year along with the other students. So, I'd like to introduce the couple of people that are with us today, and then we'll go to the proclamations that we have, which I'll let Dr. Smith come read. Tegra Briscoe has been a driver with us for one year, and she drives bus five-twenty-six for School Days Transportation. Lisa Dean has been a driver with us for three years and drives bus five-oh-three for Contractor James Dean. Deborah Knott has been a driver with us for seven years and drives bus six forty-seven for Coombs Bus and Truck Service. Missy O'Brien, she's been a driver with us for fifteen years and drives bus five thirty-eight for Contractor James Dean. Susan Oliver has been a driver for us for sixteen years and drives bus six thirty-one for Bean Bus Service. Is that right, sixteen years? All right. And then China's not here, right? And Lazarus Thomas, he started as a bus driver with us this school year and has done some trips that I've seen him on, hearing about, and he drives for Coombs Bus Service. So, I'd like to ask Dr. Smith to come up today to read the proclamation from the Board of Education, and also have with me the proclamation from Governor Moore addressing National School of Safety Week from Maryland.
All right. There you go. First and foremost, thank you so much for adding an additional run in the middle of your day to take our lovely eighth graders from Esperanza Middle School over to the higher ed and then back. It speaks volumes to all of you. We appreciate your ability to modify schedules to be able to do that. I know that that group is a lively group, and sometimes perhaps not the best at cleaning up after themselves group. So, just thank you, just thank you very much. That was, that was, yeah, let's, thank you. All right. Whereas the week of October twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four has been designated as National School Bus Safety Week in the school systems across our great nation, and whereas school bus safety is an integral part of our educational program, and whereas the efforts of our school bus drivers and school bus attendants in transporting our students safely to and from school each day are recognized for their importance now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes the week of October twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four as School Bus Driver and School Bus Attendant Appreciation Week in St. Mary's County Public Schools, and that all school staff and students and parents are encouraged to recognize their school bus drivers and their school bus attendants for safely transporting St. Mary's County Public School students each and every school day. Signed by the Board of Education. Again, I can't say enough, thank you, thank you, thank you for that. You helped us solve an unsolvable problem, and I deeply appreciate it. So, how about if we get a picture? We're gonna have to, you can hold the state proclamation, you can hold the county proclamation, you can get on that side. I want to get on this side. We're gonna bunch up like grandmas. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And thank you for coming out this evening. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
We have no public speaking tonight. Do we have any public comment? No public comment. All right, then, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Today's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes of September twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-four, personnel, teachers. There are no administrative and supervisory appointments today. Boundary change Locks Hill Road and Lenartown High School and Chopticon High School educational field trips to New York City. With that, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are switching it up tonight because we have our audited financial statements. So, first up is Mr. Chris Lehman and Tammy, as an assist apparently on the computer.
I'll take any assistance I can get.
It's on the screen. Keep pulling.
If you go down.
It's making circles all over.
Now, you're in the front.
Go down, go down, go down.
It's all uphill from here.
Why, you guys are accountants and not IT.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Chris Lehman with SB and Company. I was the engagement partner over the financial statement audit services again this year for the Board of Education. As I go through this, if you have questions, just feel free to jump in or stop me as I go through this. I'll keep it, you know, fairly high level with respect to your time. So, we've, a scoop of services. We're to audit the June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four financial statements. We do provide limited assistance with drafting the financial statements. That is a, that is a service we can provide under professional standards that does not impair our independence as auditors. In addition, I know this is a little bit of a mouthful, but we do do what's termed the single audit for short, and that's a federally mandated compliance audit for entities that expend over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal funds per year, which the school board does clearly qualify for that. As far as high-level results, we've issued a clean or what's termed unmodified opinion on the financial statements, and that's, that's good. That's the best opinion we could give under professional standards. We did not discover any instances of fraud. Our audit was not a forensic audit, but we are required to have a healthy skepticism that fraud could happen at any time. We discovered no material weaknesses in the internal controls, and that just speaks to the strong internal control environment of the board. We also received full cooperation from management. We asked for lots of records, we asked lots of questions, and we obtained adequate support for all transactions and adequate answers for all of our questions. And lastly, from a single audit perspective for the compliance audit, we had no reportable findings to report within the single audit report.
Can you expand on that, like exactly what that means?
Yep, so when we do a single audit, we're looking for two main items. One is compliance with the rules that the Office of Budget and Management sets in the compliance supplement, and then secondarily, we also have to test, there's an internal control element to that to make sure controls around compliance are functioning, and in all areas of required testing for the major programs, we had no instances of basically out-of-compliance results or controls that were not functioning.
Could you explain just for everybody the definition of a forensic audit?
Well, forensic audit, you're typically looking for instances of fraud, so that might be looking at certain bank transactions or things of that nature. So, our goal is taking the financial statements that are prepared by management to say whether or not those are fairly stated. So, for example, you know, cash, does the balance of cash exist? Fixed assets, are those being accurately reported? We're not necessarily drilling down to, you know, every transaction of in and out of cash to look for potential fraud. But in our interviews and the backup we're looking for, we have that skepticism that, you know, what if we're getting something that looks like it was altered by someone? Or when we're looking at segregation of duties and we're looking at processes, well, is there maybe a hole in the segregation of duties that could create an opportunity for fraud? And that's kind of what we do that would be separate from a forensic audit.
And are those dependent on the internal controls that, in terms of making sure that if the controls are in place, it's less likely that, that anything like that could happen?
Yeah, from an audit perspective, there's like an audit formula we use, so it's basically, we rely on a combination of control testing and then some sort of validation testing. So, the less the controls work, the more validation testing we would do. So, it's typically better to audit an entity that has strong controls because there's a lot less validation to do on the backend. So, if we looked at, if we looked at a process that the controls were completely broken to get audit comfort, we would almost have to substantively test all the balances or all the transactions. That would be a much more heavy lift. So, it also leads to efficiencies. So it's, it also leads to efficiencies in an audit when, when we can rely on the controls. But we, you know, from an audit perspective, we have judgment in what we, it's, we have judgment in how much we're looking at controls versus substantive. But ultimately, we want to get to a low risk of that balance being materially misstated. And I have a highlight of the accounts that we consider the significant accounts and what the main audit assertion is that we're looking for. But that's a high level kind of gory details of what, what, what we do to try to get comfortable with the balances.
Thank you.
And this is a picture of just the risk-based audit approach. I won't, I know I went through a little bit of the detail, the audit formula. And really in that, that second phase there, that's the audit or the assess and the design of operation of controls. That's where we're interviewing folks about the process. We're testing transactions to make sure there's proper approvals and those transactions are following the process that management has put in place. And then as far as our validating balances or substantiating balances, that happens in the fourth phase and that happens after management closes the books. The trial balances are finalized and then we do testing of final balances to ensure that those are not materially misstated. And then the next few slides I have will go through just what we consider the significant areas in the audit, you know, from an account balance perspective. And then just some of the, just riskier nature of the activity. And then we'll get into the specific key processes that we looked at in the internal control, in the internal control phase. So these, and I, I won't read through all of these, but these are our significant audit areas. Typically, it's because of the account balance or just the inherent risk of these items. Nothing that the school, nothing that the management's doing, you know, incorrectly or, or anything of that nature that would lead to these being more significant. It's just the inherent nature of, you know, the risk of cash being potentially stolen makes cash of a hi- a higher inherent risk. Collectibility of receivables and making sure that the receivables on the books are, are at their net realizable value. And looking at, you know, that there's actuarial assumptions related to the pension accounting and the OPEB accounting that we look at those assumptions and how those impact the financial statements, just as a couple examples. And then before we get into the key processes and the results of those, we also assess the control environment. And we have five interrelated components that we look at. And that's control environment, risk assessment, control activities, information and communication and monitoring. And we've concluded that there was an effective environment for the period under audit. When there's not an effective environment, that's when we typically would have significant deficiencies or material weaknesses or audit adjustments, which we had, we had none of those. And then just taking it a step further and looking at the key processes, we look at the treasury cycle and that's looking at, predominantly looking at the cash reconciliations. Are those done on a timely basis? Are there any unreconciled items, any, anything of that nature? There are certain estimates within the financial statements, like I mentioned, the OPEB and the actuarial assumptions. There's assumptions that go into those liabilities. We also look at management's timeliness for closing the books from a financial reporting perspective. You know, being ready for the audit and giving us good reliable data. To audit through, we also audit the revenue cycle as a key process. As well as the disbursement or the expenditure cycle, the payroll cycle, fixed assets. And then grant compliance from a single audit perspective is also a significant key process. And in each one of these areas, both the, the design and the operation of the controls was effective for the period under audit. And then just to keep reiterating the good news, so, and just spoiler alert, green is good here. These are the, the key accounts within the financial statements as well as the primary audit assertion that we're looking for. So just typically an asset, we want to make sure it exists. So if cash is on the ledger, we would expect cash to exist in the bank. From a liability perspective, we're typically looking for what, what could be missing. So if there were payments made after year end that related to services that were provided, you know, back into the fiscal year that we're auditing, we would look to make sure that those invoices were properly accrued back to the service that they relate to. With the pension liability, the OPEB liability, relating it, how that's being valued by the actuary and relying on the actuary report and looking at how that, how their assumptions are impacting the figures there. And then looking at the activity from a revenue and expenditure perspective, we look to make sure those, that activity is booked, that has occurred and it's booked to the correct account and in the correct period. So green means we had no, no adjustments, so we had no proposed audit adjustments through, through the audit process. So that just speaks to the quality of the records, not, not only just for audit time, but that should give you comfort that there's quality reporting that you get throughout the year. And it's not like it takes the year-end audit to get the numbers properly, properly reflected. Any other questions so far? Okay. And then just a couple, high-level financial statement highlights, which these are included within the financial statements that have been issued. This is the general funds unrestricted fund, so this does exclude the grants, which are the restricted fund piece of it. But, but this just gives you a picture from a revenue perspective. And then the next page will, will, I'll show the expenditures. But the final, the final budget for revenue was two hundred and, just under two hundred and eighty-five million dollars. The actual budgetary revenue came in a little bit over budget, or budget surplus here of two eighty-seven point four. And then on the expenditure side, on a budgetary basis, the final expenditure budget at just under two eighty-five, two hundred and eighty-five million against actual budgetary expenditures of two hundred and seventy-six million. So the actual, actual expenditures on a budgetary basis were under budget. So that led to a positive budgetary change in fund balance of ten point six million, which that gets reconciled to the GAAP financial statements. Primarily, the, the largest gap adjustment is that the, on the revenue side, the utilization of fund balance is not a GAAP revenue, since that's not generated from an external source in the fiscal year. So that is a reconciling item when we do the GAAP financial statements. So that's why you'll see here this eight million dollar adjustment to then reconcile to what you would see in your general fund GAAP financial statements from, from that perspective. So positive budgetary change of ten point six, but on a GAAP basis, a positive two point six million dollar change in general fund fund balance. And then on a GAAP basis, here's the general fund fund balance. At first, at the top, you'll see over the last three fiscal years, there's been growth in the general fund fund balance in each of the last two years. At the end of twenty twenty-four, that fund balance was at approximately twenty-one point eight million dollars. This is also disclosed in the footnotes of the financial statements. There's a detailed schedule of the types of, the different categories, the assigned fund balance, as well as the unassigned and non-spendable component. So this detail is included within the financials. And you'll see down here just the components of the assigned fund balance that's anticipated to be used for some specific purpose in, in the future.
And before you move off of this slide, and, and Ms. McCourt will come up and speak to this as well. We often hear somebody say, you've got a twenty-one million dollar fund balance. Yes, but nineteen point two million dollars of that twenty-one point eight million dollar fund balance is assigned. There are, there's a purpose to it and it's being expensed in the current, in the current budget. So there are seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars worth of purchase orders that are coming in. We hold a healthcare call of six point six million dollars because we are self-insured. We have a restricted fund for wellness. The Chesapeake Public Charter School carries its own fund balance. The Chesapeake Public Charter School actually was using their fund balance as well in this year's budget. We plowed six point five million dollars into this current budget of anticipated fund balance for things such as technology purchases and one-time things that we, that we needed to have within the school system. Holding reserve for fuel, for snow, for teacher apprentices, because the Leeds grant went away and the Esser grant went away. So we put money in it so we could continue with the teacher apprentices. Workforce Development Board, that's part of the Tri-County Workforce Development Board, they carried a two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar fund balance. And then the Student Activity Funds, which are the funds which are held in every one of our schools that are not under our purview, is about two million dollars. So when you hear somebody say, you have a twenty-one million dollar fund balance, yes, that is true, but we have an unassigned fund balance of two point six million dollars. And that's what we're talking about later tonight.
Thanks. And then the last slide of financial data, if you will. So from a single audit perspective, the federal compliance audit, we audited the Esser program as well as special education. So in total, that represents fifteen point six million dollars of federal expenditures. In total, the, the board's federal expenditures were thirty point eight million. So we audited approximately fifty-one percent of the total federal expenditures, which is well in excess of the minimum required coverage for what we term as a low-risk auditee, no history of findings, clean audits, unmodified opinions. So we would have to audit at least twenty percent. So sometimes the way that the programs give us much more coverage depending on the size of the program. But we clearly, we clearly audited enough to meet the federal requirement. And as I mentioned, no single audit findings and clean unmodified opinions on the single audit reports. The last few slides, I hit on some of these kind of as we, as we talked. But if we had, you know, we had no audit adjustments, we found no, we didn't uncover any fraud through our audit procedures. We had really no difficulties getting through the audit. We had no disagreements with management, really. No, there's nothing of a negative nature I need to bring to the board's attention through the audit process. So with that, I'll open it up if there's any question in these comments.
Um, on page, sorry. On, um, page sixteen of the, um, the book, it says that our school system has three hundred and forty-one million dollars of debt. And I was just wondering what the interest rate would be on that and like how, I don't know if you know how our school system plans on paying that off, but...
Yeah, so most of what's in the long-term debt section is the, so there's a net OPEB liability that's calculated based upon retirees and them getting the retiree healthcare. And depending on how much the board has saved to date in the fiduciary fund for OPEB, it's just an actuarial calculation of the liability less the asset saved at, just at that point in time at June thirtieth. So that's a liability that's not really, it's, it's not a current liability because it's not like you have, the board does not have to cut a check for three hundred million dollars to fund that.
So in Lehman's terms, so we're self-insured for healthcare. So whatever we collected in premiums, we have to pay out to everyone who has an insurance claim, okay, for their healthcare. When, when someone retires, we still offer insurance to our retirees, right? Until, you know, bridge Medicare or whatever. So what this is saying is that we have an actuarial, an actuarial report that says that based on all of our retirees and what their health profile is, this is our potential liability that we would have to pay out. It would never be in one lump sum or at this moment in time. It would be spread out over the life of those retirees. So there was a change in, remind me now, in what, six years ago?
Yeah, it was probably six or seven years ago, the way the calculation changed.
So, right, so that's, that's why, so that's what this is. It's, it's a liability, but, I mean, it is, but it isn't. It's, it's a liability that it is an intended liability, but it's not one that we are like on the hook for right now today.
It's saying that we have to save money for people who won't retire for thirty years.
Right.
I kind of think of it like if, if you said, when I, when I retire, I need three million dollars to retire on. Well, that's not a liability today. You just know eventually you're going to need money to cover your retirement costs.
Over the course of that individual drawing on our, on our healthcare.
To save for it.
Right, for, for the forty years that they live after they retire.
Okay.
Or maybe longer, hopefully.
So if you really want to impress somebody, when they say OPEB, you go, oh, it is ultimately the pension eligibility benefits. So when you, when you retire. And the other is showing the net pension retirement. Because that's one of the great benefits that we have for everybody who works for St. Mary's County Public Schools. Is that you, when you retire, you can continue to receive your health insurance and you get a pension. And that is a liability that we have to carry.
That was a great question, though. Thank you.
Jim, do you have anything?
On the fund balance, the assigned fund balance, I didn't see anything in there for unexpected maintenance. We had some problems, you know, with, recently with chiller and also with mold. We had to spend that, we had to find the funds to pay for that. Is that in the unassigned?
So what, what's in the assigned is management goes through and decide.
Yeah, that's me.
Oh, I was like, I was, that's worked me out for a minute.
I like, I like to keep on this, yeah.
So really, you know, if you kind of work backwards, there's twenty-one point eight million dollars of fund balance if you take assets minus liabilities in the general fund. And then it, management goes through a process of determining of that fund balance, is there a purpose or an expected use of that into the future? And that's really management's decision of what that, what that fund balance is for. So if it's, if it's not on here, it's either in default by unassigned or it would have to be funded by, you know, future, future revenues.
And, and Mr. Davis, to your point here, this is a great question where people are like, well, you know, you're all hiding money. Well, no, all the money that the school system has outside of the operational budget is sitting right there in fund balance. That's, that's all the money that we have. We don't have money anywhere else. We have a fund balance of twenty-one point eight million dollars. And we have set aside, for some things that, that are liabilities that are going to come, we have six point six million dollars for healthcare. We do not set aside a million dollars in unanticipated maintenance costs that might come up. We do have, you know, five hundred thousand dollars sitting there for snow or emergency. But that's all the money that we have in reserve in the event that we have some catastrophic thing that, that happens. And that's why actually when we're going to come before you in just a little bit with our two point six million dollars worth of unassigned fund balance, one of the things you're going to see is we are requesting to take some of that two point six million dollars and put it back into to cover the cost that we had at Esperanza Middle School. Transparency is exactly this.
So hold that question.
And your intent, and your intention of how to use these funds can change. So you're, you're not locked in to this, just, that's the intention as of June thirtieth. You can always restrategize how you want to use your fund balance at, at any point in time.
But we can't do that without coming before you. And you agreeing to it and then going before the county commissioners. And they agree to it. Like that is the, that is the key piece. All of the, the money is budgeted as the money is budgeted and it must be spent in a similar fashion. And all of it has to become before you publicly if we're going to modify something.
And things like healthcare and fuel and snow are based on looking back through, you know, what has happened in past budgets, past years, past costs. You know, I don't think any of us would, would question the, having, you know, six point six million for, for healthcare since we've had calls in the past where the amount we have, we have paid in premiums is not sufficient to cover the bills, the medical bills that have come in that we are required to pay. So I, to me, this is, this is being prudent so that we don't have to go to the commissioners and say, gee, we didn't budget anything for snow and we had snowmageddon again and, you know, we've got, we've got four hundred and fifty, five hundred thousand dollars worth of having to clear. worth of having to clear parking lots and so forth, so..."
Yeah, and yeah, the healthcare is a healthcare call, not not anything related to the premiums that we pay.
Correct.
So.
Because you don't know.
Right, right, and it sat at four million dollars for a number of years. And then as we saw them, the call getting closer and closer and closer every year, we added more money to that, especially coming out of COVID where people were not able to get to the doctors for eighteen months or two years and their healthcare issues multiplied on top of each other, so. And that was also, once again, done through, you know, our insurance services with and CareFirst with their estimates.
When Ms. McCourt and I started eleven years ago, we wiped out, the school system had to wipe out every bit of that. And I think we had operationally a couple hundred thousand dollars in our fund balance on a two hundred million dollar plus budget. You know, you running your household without one penny in the bank, which some people do.
Jim, do you have any more questions?
No.
Dorothy?
Now, your audit, where does it go from here? Do you report that to, send that to the government or is that just for us internally?
That's really for for you all and for management to determine the distribution strategy of it. So we just provide the soft copy as well as we've provided hard copies as well.
So we we have a.
But it's it's due to MSDE on, by September thirtieth, which that deadline has been met.
Right, and we we have a, we have an audit committee. So we met before the last board meeting and we have, it consists of a variety of people and a community member under under Comar. So we met in order to review these results with with our external auditors. And then then they were published and released. The audit of financial statements are also provided to the county commissioners and have already been sent over there. They also go to the General Assembly and to the DLS in addition to MSDE.
And we have them all posted on our website going back well over a decade.
They're posted on Board Docs currently and will be posted on our website immediately after today's meeting.
Thank you. That's all for me.
So, you know, I can give my standards feel, you know, this is, you know, this is, this was my, this is my career here. So, you know, once again, just to reiterate, you know, to have all those columns green and I don't know how many years running are that we don't even have any single audit findings. Especially, I mean, it was it was pretty amazing coming out of COVID when all of that money was coming in and it was an absolute nightmare to track. And now, you know, that you're continuing to audit those, you know, those those funds that we've had and we still have absolutely no exceptions, which is like every journal entry is accurate across the board. So hats off to Tammy, and this is like Tammy's Super Bowl. So hats off to Tammy and everyone in, you know, in accounting and finance. Because to see this is extremely rare. And if you if you read any of the other audit reports that even DLS does across the systems, I don't think anyone is locked up on this is what we are, so excellent job.
It's like a report card for finance.
It is.
Put this on the refrigerator, Ms. McCourt. Ms. Jewett as well. Put it on the refrigerator.
Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mary, Kathy, do you guys have anything?
Just congratulations. This is, this is what I think we all expect. But you have delivered this year after year after year. And kudos to all in the finance department because this doesn't happen by accident. This happens because of good planning, extreme attention to detail and true accountability. And not only does this board owe all of you, you know, a great thanks, but I think the citizens of this community can rest better because because we get these kinds of audits with no findings. And you have, you have, you have really, as Karen said, you you have won the Super Bowl. Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
We tried to get you out of here before seven. Look at that.
All right, thank you. Do you want me to close, should I close out of this?
I I don't know the answer to that. Ms. Ms. Burr is up next, so.
Here, I'll at least try to.
Just don't lose that mouse off the screen.
Yeah, it took a lot to find it.
How about that?
The mouse is right in the middle of this.
There you go. Good. The mouse is in the house.
Okay, I am going to talk to you a little bit about our school day SAT performance. Why do we give the SAT? Well, it is one of the most widely used college admission tests in the US and many institutions of higher education use it for academic counseling as well as scholarships and merit aid. And I have a link in the presentation there about some schools who give automatic scholarships based on SAT scores. And it also helps our students show colleges what they know and what they can do. Just some overview information about the SAT. We did make some changes. In SY twenty-four, the school day SAT was administered free of charge to juniors who signed up to take the test. Prior to twenty twenty-four, we ordered SAT tests for every single junior in our school system. That was a slight change last year because we found some students who either didn't, excuse me, didn't need the SAT for the college they were going to or they were looking more at going directly into a career or a trade or the military. There are other assessments they were more interested in than the SAT. So the College Board also made some changes. And for the first time in twenty twenty-four, the test was completely digital and it was a computer adaptive version, not question by question, but section by section. The total SAT time was reduced from three hours to just over two hours because of the new online digital version. Excuse me. I'm sorry, just getting a burp hold. There's still two sections in the digital SAT. There's a reading/writing section and a math section. There are no penalties for incorrect answers and scale scores run between four hundred and sixteen hundred points. This is a breakdown of the scores for the school day SAT. Students have an option to take the SAT many times throughout the school year on a Saturday, but we, as St. Mary's County School, offer it during the school day. And when you look at the state numbers and the all numbers, which are international numbers, these are numbers that are given for school day-only administrations. Going up, I'm so sorry. Going a little farther, we break down the scores for each school, high school in our system and the benchmarks. SAT benchmarks, the number and percentage of students who met their benchmarks for both reading and writing and then math individually and then the students who met both of those benchmarks. And and if you do a comparison there and look at, you know, the bottom three lines and the percentages, St. Mary's County has done very well as far as meeting those benchmarks. The benchmark for reading and writing according to the College Board is four eighty, a score of four eighty and a score of five thirty for math. And the benchmark according to the College Board, what that means is that students who make that benchmark have a seventy-five percent chance or better of earning a C or better in their first semester freshman college courses. So of our students who took the SAT, they are saying that forty-two percent of our students have a better than seventy-five percent chance of earning a score of C or better in both their first semester college English course or language course and their first semester college math course. Doing a two-year comparison here, you'll notice between twenty-three and twenty-four, the number of test takers went down slightly. That's because we didn't require all of our juniors to take the test. We made this, we have it available to you. If you're interested, sign up. We will gladly give you the test. But we're not going to hold your feet to the fire to take the test. Along with that, you'll notice in the chart on the right that our scores also went up, probably because the students taking it were the students who were truly interested in taking the test. The other point to consider when you're looking at this is that this was the first time it was completely digital. So we had two changes. We had a shorter, computer adaptive, completely digital test instead of a paper and pencil test. And we did not make everybody take the test. We said, "We are offering you this opportunity should you wish to partake in the opportunity." Moving forward, we have decided this year, we're going to go ahead with the, "If you want to take it, please sign up." We just gave the PSAT today, as a matter of fact, and we gave that to all sophomores. And because we, well, all sophomores because we use that for, we get a predictor for AP predictions, who, what students are recommended to take AP courses. So we gave it to all of our sophomores and we made that optional for our juniors, again, because even the PSAT is used for scholarships. So we're moving forward with this plan that we, we're giving you this opportunity. You let us know if you want to partake in the opportunity. There are still full-length practice tests available using something called the Blue Book app, which is the app now used to take, the College Board has this app that we use to take their tests. Not an app you do on your phone, it's on a laptop. But there are practice tests available in that app and those are accessible through any computer with internet access. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, so thank you for putting together this wonderful presentation. And from the student side, I'm really excited to see that all of our schools have above-average marks and they're all about similar, which is a good indicator that we're providing quality education across the board, which is super good to see. But I was wondering why juniors have to pay to take the SAT this year?
Juniors do not have to pay to take the SAT.
Sorry, the PSAT, sorry.
The juniors do not have to pay to take the PSAT. It is free of charge. If you are interested, all you have to do is, there's a form you can fill out with your guidance counselor if you need help, or every school has put it in their smore. You just click on, it's a simple Google form, you fill it out, there's no charge. We just, it's an option.
All right. It was it was ordered for all of the sophomores, but the juniors, you had to sign up on the Google form if you wanted it.
Okay.
Otherwise, they weren't going to order the test for you.
And do you know why there's no PSAT for ninth grade this year?
It wasn't be, it wasn't a good, you know, we just heard about budget. And it wasn't being used for, it wasn't as useful, I would say, for predictability. For tenth grade, there is a, it's a very, very standard practice to use that tenth grade PSAT for predictability for AP, for junior and senior year. And there was not that strong correlation with ninth graders and the College Board does not provide that service. The ninth graders don't take the same PSAT and they don't provide that AP predictability. So the usefulness of the test was not, we weren't getting the bang for the buck out of it that we are because it just wasn't as useful. It's not the same test even.
All right, thank you.
The, do you have any information or data on the efficacy of going virtual versus a paper testing?
The College Board has not come out with anything in print yet for their findings, from their psychometricians. I can tell you just observationally, we had positive remarks from both our students and our staff with the digital test. Everyone liked that it was shorter, the fact that it is what they call multi-stage adaptive. That's why they went computer, where you had to take a three-hour test to reach that frustration level to see what students actually, what their what their height of depth or breadth of knowledge was. With this new multi-stage testing, it does the same thing in a shorter amount of time. So very positive feedback, no empirical data is available yet.
Yeah, I, when I, when you first mentioned it, I was thinking you were kind of dumbing it down if you went from like three, three hours to two, two point four or whatever. That's not the case.
No, it it is not. It is more personalized, if anything else. You know, you have every, the SAT is set up so that the reading sec, the reading portion has two sections and the math portion has two sections. The first section is more general. And then based on how you do, since it's a computer test, based on your performance on the first section, it decides are you going to go into section one A or section, or I'm sorry, section two A or section two B based on the number of questions you got right and wrong in the first section. So it's a more personalized experience and students have a better chance of being successful on the questions with which they're presented.
Thank you. That's all I have.
So Jim, just, I I went to a conference last fall for, with all of the high school counselors across the nation. And I went, the the woman, the AP College Board woman was there and she was one of the, she was leading the development of the computerized test. And they have been piloting this in Europe for, I guess, for almost eighteen months to two years prior to bringing it stateside, just to make sure that they worked out all of the kinks because, you know, they knew this was going to be a mass, you know, uh, rollout. And what they had found just in the data that they had seen for students who had been taking it in Europe, who were primarily American students or people who wanted to come to American colleges, was that they were more successful on the test than what they had been on the paper and pencil just because of the exact reason that you said, you know, because it was it was more adaptive to what they knew, so.
Thank you. The other question is, when I took the SAT, you got a one chance. There was no prep, you know, courses or anything like that. You just got up Saturday morning, went out to several friends and you took the test and that was it. So you're giving tests every grade level. Is it the highest score that you get that gets presented to the colleges?
The College Board actually does something called superscoring and students can take the SAT as many times as they like. As a school system, we offer it free of charge to all juniors every year. So that's one time during the school day, not, as you said, on a Saturday. Students can certainly sign up and take the SAT for a fee on Saturdays and we usually do that within our schools about four times a year. But they can also go to other schools that aren't in our school system. And the way the College Board does this, what they call superscoring, is if you do really well on math when you take it in December, but you do much better on the English part when you take it in May, they can use the math score from November and the English part from May and that'll come up with your super score.
Gotcha.
You literally submit all of your scores and then they superscore it for you. So, and especially for math, it depends on, you know, you know, where you are in your math cycle in high school too, you know, based on what your score, because your score could be affected between taking it in ninth grade or eleventh grade.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions, but looking at the data, it was encouraging to see the students. They've done very well, so keep it up, kids.
Mary?
How are you reaching out to students who would not normally show an interest to take the SAT?
Well, that is through a lot through, not just their guidance counselors, but the guidance counselors play a big role in it. Teachers also talk about the importance of the SAT. And we have college and career advisors that are in the schools and they're all talking about, listen, this is, this might be a reason you might want to consider taking it. But as you can see from our our results over the two years, we we get much better results when we focus on the kids who truly do think it's valuable to them. But the message is coming across from classroom teachers, from guidance counselors and from career advisors.
And parents.
And parents, yes.
Thank you.
You know, it's it's such a challenge. Kids in high school may not, there's some who may decide, "Well, I don't really think I want to go to college. There's no point in me sitting for this test." And yet, taking the test when the when the information, they're most comfortable with it, with the idea that, well, I might not want to. Um, with the idea that, well, I might not want to go now, but in a few years. I might be working for a company that says, we'll pay for you to go to, you know, to take classes. Um, and so, um, I, I hope that uh we can encourage more kids to take it. Um, over time, but um I am pleased with the, the. Really the, the, the tightness of the scores, um, and the fact that, um, as Hannah said. You know, really let you know that, that across all of our comprehensive high schools, students are getting um. The, the same education, um, to be able to produce um very similar results, um, when they're tested on it. So thank you very much for sharing all of this information with us.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. All right, Ms. McCourt. With our September financial report. For the month of September, which is the first uh reporting month for the current fiscal year, we wait until the month of September, just as a reminder. Because uh that's when our ten-month pay run is reflected on um the September report. As well as the encumbrances for the majority of our employees. So for, on the re- revenue side, our budget stands at two hundred and eighty-nine point nine million dollars. We've received year-to-date eighty-nine point nine million dollars, representing thirty point eight one percent. Um, one area that I'd like to point out on our revenues because it's going to come up in our budget adjustment. Um, for the next item is, our interest income is at one point two million dollars. And year-to-date, we've already received fifty-eight point two two percent of that at six, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. On the expenditure side of the two hundred and eighty-nine point nine million dollars. We have encumbrances outstanding of two hundred and twenty-one point two million dollars, the majority of course of which are associated with salaries. Encumbrances plus expenditures year-to-date toto- total two hundred and sixty-three point two million dollars, representing ninety point seven nine percent of our budget. There are no particular areas of concern or note. Are there any questions? Does anyone have any questions?
No. No questions.
Okay, all right. Tammy, do you just want to roll right into your budget amendment then? If the computer cooperates?
It, it's really lagging, um, it does not, does not want to. This Board Doc is being difficult at the moment.
So as was presented in the FY twenty-four audit of financial statement presentation. We did have available unassigned fund balance of two point six million dollars that predominantly was derived from our interest income. We had budgeted, um. Four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars and our actuals exceeded uh two point nine million dollars. For comparison purposes, we always do a look back as much as a look forward when we're working on our budgeting of revenues. And FY twenty-two, we actually received forty-five thousand dollars in interest income. And in FY twenty-three, we received one point seven million dollars. We certainly never expected it to maintain at that level and we're expecting it to begin to slow down now in the current fiscal year. So the request is to utilize that fund balance immediately as we have traditionally done. Um, bringing that, those monies back to work immediately. Um, for Esperanza Middle School for the remediation work there, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. As well as going ahead and putting money into the technology refresh of two million dollars. We've been heavily reliant on Ezra funds over the past three, four years. Um, for our technology refresh, those monies are completely uh utilized as of September thirtieth. So um we are requesting to use that entire two point six million dollars of unassigned fund balance. In addition, we are requesting a categorical amendment reallocating existing approved budget and FTEs. From the regular education instructional salaries, which is the MSD category oh three. To the special education category, MSD category oh six. Specifically to support Spring Ridge Middle School for one teacher and two paraeducators to open up a new sale classroom. As well as uh Green Holly Elementary School to support a, another Tides classroom of one teacher and one paraeducator. So finally, the budget amendment would reflect a two point six million dollar revenue increase. As well as an increase in expenditures for our operations category of five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Our materials and instruction category of two million fifty-four thousand two hundred and eight dollars. A decrease in our instructional salaries for the reg- regular education teacher and paraeducator. Of approximately one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and offsetting increase to our special education category of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. For a total expenditure increase of two point six million dollars as well. Other any questions? Yes, so thank you for putting this together. Um, I know that this might not be on the budget end. But do you know what would be included in the technology refresh? Yes, um, so we've had some challenges with our smart boards this year. So we were looking at purchasing mini computers to support those smart boards for instructional purposes. As well as um laptop refreshes for students. Do you know what laptops specifically would be refreshed?
Yours.
Yeah, because I was just going to ask because I know that, um.
Well, that, yes. It, it is, at the secondary level, it is particularly y- y- your cohort. And the fact that we got out of cycle through, so there are many students who find themselves with computers that they have been doing a fantastic job with. Your computer is six years old?
Six years old.
Yeah, that's a, that's amazing. The longevity for most computers, you know, you predict three to four years, best case scenario. The fact that you're getting the length out of it that you have, that's great. And the other is, at the elementary level, we are finding children in fourth grade. Who've had laptops, kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth grade, that probably need to have a refresh as well. So we'll be, so we'll be ordering the model that we use at the elementary level. We'll be ordering the model that we use at the high school level. And that'll re, that will refresh our inventory, so people who have them will be able to swap that out.
Yeah, I was just going to say that um it seems like an AP exam liability because.
Yes.
Um, the computers can't install like the AP exam software, so that would be an issue. But I'm glad that we are covering it.
Yes.
Jim?
No, no questions.
No questions.
Thank you.
Mary?
Thank you.
Kathy? No questions. Not for me either, so.
So at the end of this, how much unallocated fund balance will we have?
We will have no unassigned fund balance after the Board of County Commissioners approves this.
Assuming they approve the allocation, okay.
Yes. All right, so I would like a motion for this action item, please.
I move that the Board of Education approve the presented increase and categorical amendment to the budget for FY twenty twenty-five. And approve submittal of this budget amendment to the commissioners of Saint Mary's County for their approval as required by the annotated code of Maryland.
Can I have a second? Okay, all there's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. So, our next board meeting will be on Wednesday, October twenty-third. With executive session at five o'clock and the open meeting at six. And the day before, in this very room.
We are joint meeting.
At nine o'clock, we have a joint meeting with the commissioners of Saint Mary's County, so.
Tune in.
With that, we are adjourned.